Good morning, everyone. It's my privilege to call aboard this regular meeting of the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees. Reverend Adams is unable to be here for our invocation, and so I will pray for us in just a moment. In my morning devotion that I was going over, I was sent a scripture which is Philippians 1:6 that I wanted to share. Be confident of this, that he who began a good work in you will carry it on to completion until the day of Christ Jesus. It is my firm belief that each of us has a purpose in life, and if nothing is more evident than the people in this room, each have a purpose, and chose a purpose. And I would just like to encourage everybody to stay focused on your purpose. Thank you for what you do on a daily basis for our state, for our system, and just be encouraged by the scripture. Let's go to the Lord and pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you with praise and thanksgiving today. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We thank you for this great nation that we live in, that we're blessed to be in and part of, and this great state that we enjoy so many benefits from. Lord, specifically, I want to lift up Governor Kay Ivey, her staff, her cabinet, all our legislature, and all our government, government in this state. Lord, we ask that you give them discernment, wisdom, to work totally for the benefit, the detriment of the people of this state. Lord, thank you for the opportunities that we receive to work in the educational system for our state. Lord, guide us and direct us. I ask for blessings on our chancellor, on his staff, on the presidents of our institutions, on all their staff and faculty, and the blessings for each member of this board. Lord, thank you for the opportunities you've given us, these opportunities to work for the betterment of our state. Guide us and direct us and keep us safe. Lord, we thank you for everything. You are Lord of all, with praise in Jesus' name. At this time, I'd like to welcome Governor Kay Ivey, the president of our board, and we thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much for having me here.
In addition to that, we have with us a new ex officio member from the State Board of Education, Mr. Jeff Newman. He's just been recently appointed by Governor Ivey. Newman, welcome.
Thank you so much, and I'd like to thank the governor, the chancellor, Chairman Thompson, and the whole Board of Trustees. It's an opportunity for me. My heart's in the community college system and education. I'm willing to serve anywhere I can, so it's an honor for me. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'll ask Crystal Brown to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Change. General recommendation to amend the agenda for the approval of the president for Shelton State and for Bishop State. I'm now entertaining motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, amended agenda, please raise your hand. Item five is the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting, which was June 7th. The board members have received these minutes in advance, had time to look over them. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the... Motion by Mr. Caldwell is our second. Second by Mr. Pan Troy. Any discussion changes to the minutes? There being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the June 7th meeting, please raise your hand. Minutes approved. Item six, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment? Anyone have signed up for public comment? Item seven, chancellor, I think we have a special announcement.
We do. And making the announcement, I want to, as I look around this room and look at all these people, it makes you excited to know that this many people are this seriously interested in improving education in this state. And I am so happy to work for a board who has an agenda. That agenda is simply and straightforward to a person. Do everything we can, and that's their charge to us, everything we can to improve public education in this system, and in particular, make the community college system the best in the country. And that's what our job is, and that's what we're trying to do. With that, Mr. Chairman and Governor, I'd like to ask Susan Price. Would you come forward, Susan? Susan has been tasked with this project, and as she does always, she does a great job with it, and we're so excited about this. Susan, if you will, say a few things of the governor I'd like to hear.
I'd be happy to. Good morning. So I'd like to give you just one data point to think about. Code.org, a nonprofit organization dedicated to expanding access to computer sciences, estimates that there are more than 4,000 unfilled computing jobs in Alabama. 4,000. Now, not all of these jobs are related to app development. We know they cover a wide range of expertise and technical training, but it's undeniable that one of the fastest-growing segments in computing is app development. And it's clear that we are not graduating or training enough people in this state and in this country to keep up with the demand for skilled workers in this arena. In fact, it just takes a glance at your smartphone or your tablet to understand that the way we access information today and the way we communicate is increasingly governed by apps. Our community college presidents pay close attention to business and industry and workforce trends, and many recognize some time ago that this segment of computing offers opportunities for students that we have not been capitalizing on, and they understood they needed to make computer science more of a priority. So they say timing is everything, and it's really true, because just as our presidents were brainstorming about ways our colleges could educate students on cutting-edge computer technology, we were contacted by a little company in California called Apple. During conversations with representatives from Apple's over the last few months, we were invited to pilot a new app development curriculum for community colleges. We seized upon that opportunity. This pilot that we are rolling out offers a full-year course designed by Apple engineers and educators, and it teaches students elements of app design using Swift, which is one of the world's most popular programming languages. Introducing the coding curriculum into our community colleges fits so perfectly with our mission, as it's designed to address workforce development needs in a technology-driven economy. The curriculum ensures that students will be able to enter the work world with knowledge of app development that can be applied in a variety of settings. So we have four colleges that will pilot this, and they were strategically chosen: Drake State Community and Technical College, Bishop State Community College, Wallace Community College Selma, and Trenton State Community College. As you're aware, Drake and Bishop are located on major arteries of the state in more urban areas where there's a great demand for those with computing skills. We were particularly interested in piloting at Wallace-Selma, because for the most part, these types of jobs do not bind you to a physical office in a downtown metropolitan area. So this is an opportunity where individuals who live in more rural areas can be just as competitive as those living in our metropolitan areas. And finally, we wanted to pilot this program at our college located here in the capital city. There's already been a great deal of buzz, excitement, positive feedback in the few short weeks since we announced that we would be offering this in the fall. We've had inquiries from high schools interested in dual enrollment, from current community college students, from non-students interested in learning these skills through non-credit continuing education, and finally, from four-year graduates, four-year college graduates interested in honing their skills. We couldn't ask for better support from Apple. We have a terrific team, Apple team, that has been strategizing with us, assisting each college in setting up a programming lab, providing focused training for our faculty who will be teaching the course, making personal visits to our colleges and our system office as recently as this week in a show of support. We are excited about this new partnership and know it's going to continue to grow and strengthen. As for the future, we do not intend to limit this program to those four institutions, because we have confidence in the opportunities that this course offers our students. Our plans are to expand it to other institutions in the near future. Since this is a pilot, we want to be able to update you at future meetings, possibly even with a demonstration. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Governor, you might be surprised when this... I got a phone call yesterday. The senator came home, as he always does, and he said, "Baker, how's the new governor treating?" And I said, "Well, she's not just treating these, she's treating the community college system with the utmost respect." Thank you, Jessica.
Good morning. Thank you so much. It's been amazing, this special day, this special announcement. Susan Price, she gave a great overview, and I met the gentleman from Apple coming in, and he tells me that we're the first, we're one of six community college systems that they've selected to partner with this pilot effort. But we're the only system that, as he says, his words, "Y'all are all in." The rest of them are, you know, maybe starting with one college, but we are all in. What a great tribute to the great people of Alabama. This is an exciting time for us in our great state, and chancellor, I'm always pleased to work with you in the community college system. Y'all are aware that Rowa meets the road and provides upgrading of programs and curriculums that are 21st century job-related, and that is so important. And I so appreciate the fact that the community college system is taking on this innovative approach to training and to learning these 21st century jobs. Now, if I heard Susan correctly, Susan, you make it sound like even I, as governor, can learn to develop an app.
That's right. That's right. You can do it.
Chancellor Baker, I think maybe even you can learn to do something. But seriously, I am astounded that there are 4,500 jobs available in Alabama today that are not being filled, and yes, while some of them are a couple of broad fields of computer science, there is a large segment of app development, and we need people trained to fill those jobs. These are good-paying jobs, and they are 21st century, and they are what, taking us to the future. And there's just absolutely no question that computer science must be a priority in our great state. As I understand it, the revenue that may be generated from mobile apps may surpass $100 million by 2020. Now, with that kind of growth in demand for competent workers in app design grows exponentially, and to pay, according to my information from Code.org, the average salary for a computing job is nearly $83,000 annually. That's very enticing. And furthermore, another attraction is the fact that you can train for these jobs and you don't have to be at a facility or a classroom. You can do it at home, you can do it from anywhere in the state, and that is just, that's an attractive feature. And I am so pleased that y'all are offering this and being so innovative in the way that you're reaching out to make it possible for people to participate. I want to applaud the Alabama Community College System for making this innovative training available to all people, not only your traditional students in your two-year college system, but also high school students through dual enrollment, and also average Alabamians who just want to take the courses and learn how to code for no credit. That's also available, and that's enticing as well. So I look forward to the success of this pilot program, to expanding it to all of our two-year colleges in the near and future, and I am just proud as punch to be with y'all today to announce this, and I just appreciate the board's action, working with Apple CEO Tim Cook, an Alabama native, and we are grateful that they've given us the opportunity to partner with them at this stage, and we are all in in Alabama. Thank you, Apple.
Thank you, Governor Ivey. I think the board is really excited about this collaboration, this partnership, and I'd like to express my thanks to Apple. Thanks to Chancellor Baker and Susan Price and all the staff for being ready and able to go ahead and take advantage of this opportunity. Any other comments from the board? We just like to see good news, and we just look forward to more of them. Anything else from you, chancellor? Next item, another new, item eight, new businesses, election for officers. Item eight, A1, election of chairman. At this time, I'll open up the floor for nominations for chair. There being no move to vote, all those in favor of Milton Davis as vice chairman, please Milton Davis is the vice chairman. Thank you for your support. You got it. I probably hadn't said this enough, but this board, serving on this board, has probably been one of the highlights of my life. I thoroughly enjoy, and enjoy, do enjoy, the association with each member of this board, and it's just been great. I don't say that enough, but thank you all, and I've served a true pleasure. I know, Governor Ivey, it is a full day today. Governor, thank you for...
Thank you so much, and congratulations to the board for making good leadership. With the Holy College continuing to work with you to make this state the best it can be because our people are gainfully employed in 21st century jobs. Y'all are one of the great things to be a part of, so thank you for all that you all have done, and please let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Item nine, which is academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, physical information technology, and workforce development. Item A1 is associate applied science program and business for Bevill State Community College. We, of course, covered this at last month's work session. Any questions been asked about that? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Motion by Mr. Caldwell is our second. Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? There being no move to vote, all those in favor of approving the associate applied science and business program at Bevill State, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion's approved. Item three, renovation of warehouse and purchase of construction equipment at Coastal Alabama Community College. We once again had a presentation on this at our last month's work session. I'll now entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Brown, is our second. Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? I think it was well explained. I think this is going to be a renovation at the Apple campus, which I think is badly needed. It's been a deferred item for quite some time, and the demand is really there. All those in favor of approving the renovation of warehouse and purchase of construction equipment for Coastal Alabama Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion's approved. Next, item four, is renovation of buildings E, M, and K on the Patterson campus of Trenton State Community College. Once again, this was on the work session last month. We had a thorough explanation. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Davis is our second. Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? I will say we hope this is not repeated, and leave it at that. Any further discussion? There being no move to vote, all those in favor of approving the increase for expenditures for construction or renovation project at Los Angeles State, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item six is allocation of system and prison education operations, maintenance appropriation. This was covered at the work session once again. Did you... I'll entertain a motion on this item. Motion by Ms. Brown is our second. Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any further discussion? There being no, I'll lift a vote, all those in favor of approving the allocation of the 2017, 18 operations and maintenance, maintenance, appropriation, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is tuition rate adjustment. This is basically a rate adjustment that was approved back in 2009 by State Board of Education for each year going forward, $2 per credit hour, beginning in fall semester of 2011. We had a thorough explanation of this, and in the discussions by the board, I want to point out that we had some very good data presented to us from the Southern Regional Education Board, SRDB, that showed how we compared region and tuition costs, and that was just, just very compelling to me, that this very modest increase, although we don't like to do this, and don't like tuition increases, that it was something that was needed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this. Motion by Mr. Smith is our second. Second by Mr. Pan Troy. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to just point out three things with respect to the study that you mentioned. Although our tuition rates may be somewhat level with others surrounding southeastern states, the real number that we began to look at was the income percentage per family to cover costs within the state in which you reside and go to college. Alabama's 15.6% go to community college or technical college, technical school within the community colleges. 15.6% of a family's income. That puts us near the bottom, if you will, with respect to the cost, which is good. And I think, you know, we don't like to do this, we don't like to raise these, but by the same token, we need income to continue to operate and be able to grow and do the things that we have scheduled and we want to do with this board. I would point out to you that the Southern Region average is 17.2, and the U.S. average is 19.2. So we're well below the U.S. average, well below the southeastern average. But I did want to point out this too. The same report had this information, as far as state financial awards for helping children or students go to college, helping people go to college. The U.S. average is $684 per student, that's annual. The southeast region is 818. The state of Alabama spends $20 in state funds per student, and that's a place that I hope somehow, some way, we find a way to catch up, because we're at the bottom. Our neighboring state, Tennessee, spends almost $1,700 per student every year in awards. I think they have advantages that we don't have...
Item seven is tuition rate adjustment. This is basically a rate adjustment that was approved back in two thousand nine by State Board of Education for each year going forward, two dollars per credit hour at the beginning and fall semester of twenty of eleven. We had a thorough explanation of this and in the discussions by the board, I want to point out that we had some very good data presented to us from the Southern Regional Education Board, SREB, that showed how we compared region and tuition costs. And that was just, just very compelling to me that this very modest increase, although we don't like to do this, we don't like tuition increases, that it was something that was needed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith. It's our second. Sorry, second by Mr. Danfor. Any further discussion? Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I want to just point out three things with respect to the study that you mentioned. Although our tuition rates may be somewhat level with other surrounding southeastern states, the, the real number that we began to look at was the income percentage per family to cover costs within the state in which you reside in going to college. Alabama's fifteen point six percent go to community college or technical college, technical school within the community colleges. Fifteen point six percent of a family's income. That puts us near the bottom, if you will, with respect to the cost, which is good. And I think, you know, we don't like to do this, we don't like to raise these, but by the same token, we need income to continue to operate and be able to grow and do the things that we have scheduled and we want to do with the board. I would point out to you that the Southern Region average is seventeen point two and the U.S. average is nineteen point two. So we're well below the U.S. average, well below the southeastern average. But I did want to point out this too. The same report had this information as far as state financial awards for, for helping children or students go to college, helping people go to college. The U.S. average is six hundred and eighty-four dollars per student. That's annual. The southeast region is eight hundred and eighteen. The state of Alabama spends twenty dollars in state funds per student. And that's, that's a place that I hope somehow, some way, we find a way to catch up because we're, we're at the bottom. Our neighboring state Tennessee spends almost seventeen hundred dollars per student every year in awards. I think we, they, they have advantages that we don't have to be able to fund those things, but that's just a challenge that we've got to overcome. Just wanted to bring some of those things out.
Thank you for those who are putting that out. Mr. McAnally, we have very well taken, especially the funding for tuition for the state. That's, that's a key factor there. Any, any other comments? Discussion by Ford. There being none, move to vote. All those in favor, favor of approving this tuition rate adjustment, please raise your hand.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, under section ten, executive legal and public information, we have two action items, revision of mission statement for J.F. Hemmer State Technical College and the reduction of workforce policy guidelines for J.F. Hemmer State Technical College. I would just propose an entertaining motion of both of these action items at one time. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Davis. It's our second. Sorry, any discussion? The motion is second is for the revision of mission statement and approval of the reduction of workforce policy guidelines for J.F. Hemmer State Technical College. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Next, item eleven, Chancellor personnel.
Yes, I'd like to make a public comment. Or maybe introduce the names. Reggie Sykes has been serving, Dr. Sykes has been serving as head of superintendent since he left, so they were merged to read, which is now posted. And what a lot of you may not be aware, the day Reggie walked in the door, there were fourteen litigation cases related to first name. In such that time, he's had significant progress. In addition to that, there was uncovered a letter from the U.S. attorney providing a serious observation about the lack of attention to ADA. And that had been filed away and not attended to, and it had been, it had been there for numerous months. Over a process of working in an environment with difficulties and with issues both political and practical internally, Reggie, in his quiet way, made significant progress. I think, Reggie, I believe I'm correct, all of those fourteen except for maybe two are gone. One left, and would gradually have been working at that. And while he was so gracious to assume the role as interim, he didn't delay the process of solving the problems that existed in the state. And so it's today that I would like to recommend Reggie Sykes as the permanent president of Bishop State Community College. Reggie? Like just make sure they all know you already. I'd like to recommend that that actually.
And a recommendation to approve Dr. Reginald Sykes as president of Bishop State Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Then a motion by Mr. Davis. I'll say a second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? There being none, move to vote. All those in favor of approving the Chancellor's recommendation of Dr. Reginald Sykes as permanent president of Bishop State Community College, please raise your hand.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, President.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Trustees and Chancellor, let me say thank you for this opportunity to serve as president of Bishop State Community College, and I am honored to serve as president. As interim, the bishop for a year and a half, to be honest with you, it seemed like it was ten years. We've made a lot of, a lot of strides, but let me say this, there's still challenges that, that I'm faced with as a bishop, and I ask you for your continued support. I guess about four months ago, a gentleman that I did not know ran into me downtown Mobile, and he asked, are you the head of president and bishop? I said, yes. He said, I just want you to know, turned out he's a bishop, he said, I just want you to know that Bishop State Community College is a gold mine. Mobile is growing, and it seems like weekly, new businesses are being announced coming to Mobile. Industries are moving to Mobile. Mobile needs Bishop State Community College. And one thing I would say, that students will be given every opportunity to be successful at Bishop. We're going to meet the needs of the community, and we're going to be there around the table in whatever we need to do to make sure that we're doing our part to help with the, a skilled workforce there in Mobile. It's exciting to be, be in Mobile at this time, and I am excited to lead Bishop State College. Again, I appreciate the, the opportunity. Thank you.
I, I think the gentleman is correct. Bishop is in a position, in a community, that is moving, growing, and expanding an industry. And it's a great opportunity, and Reggie is already working on plans how to best serve the impacted community. And I think that will take a good step forward. You know, he did a good job as interim. We have a lot of people that are serving across the state, and I just want you to know, I appreciate the job he's doing. I, I look at Jeff Rose, who took over responsible of these as interim, that was one of our schools that was financially destitute, and today they lead our staff here for, deserve for them. So there's been a lot of serious effort put into the system by the board. And one in particular, and I'm looking around the room, and I notice you've got to be, you're Cynthia. If we're at week and a half, so you're right over here. Cynthia has been one of those people that's been called on and more than one a kid. She assumes the responsibility as interim president at Enterprise. Enterprise was struggling big time, and she proved her worth as an interim, as, as president. She did a super job while she was at Enterprise. Then she was called, I'm not even sure she was asked, I think she was told that she was going to be interim at Shelton, and she's had a delightful.
Two years almost?
Year and a half. Period of time that she's served. I tried to talk Cynthia into coming in, in-house, because we have, we, we need a cadre of people that seem to understand how to be interim presidents. But Cynthia has chosen to go back to her home school, Lawson. I made a deal with Cynthia, and I've also made a deal with, here's, here's somewhere I've, I've seen, her president, that she not only is going to contribute at senior level of leadership at Lawson, she's going to be available for special projects out of this office. So Barry and I will talk about that on a regular basis and depending on how many times Barry screws up, I might win that argument. No, I, I think it's a season, but it, it will be a delightful experience, and I just want you to know how much we appreciate the job you've done in both of our operations. Thank you, Cynthia. The next gentleman I want to introduce to you is, I'm just going to call him David, because I want to call him David William Ashley. I've spent a lot of time looking for someone to fulfill the mission that I felt was needed in Tuscaloosa. As you well know, Tuscaloosa is a, it is another one of those golden opportunities in my opinion. Great university there, they actually play football too. But it's a, not just a great university town, it is one of the more elaborate economic growth towns and communities in this state. Industry is spreading all the time. The community is waiting for someone to come and take the reins and move forward at a really aggressive approach in making the school what it needs to be. A considerable amount of time since that leadership has been in a permanent position. And it's with that that I would like to introduce you to William Ashley. William is currently serving in a community college in Mississippi. Before we go further, I want to make it clear, William, his president was so concerned about losing, he said, look, you've got to give me some time to make the transition. And William was kind of his right end guy. And so I said, okay, I will accommodate. In addition to that, he has family, he has a fifteen-year-old daughter and a nine-year-old son, and they are involved in the community and student activities. So it's going to take a while for the transition to get fully implemented. William will begin working, and will be by this board, full-time in October at the school. But in the meantime, Jason Hurst, instead of, Jason Hurst is, you know, is on our staff, but Jason is going, beginning month of service. They both were under the tutelage of the professor at, at Mystic State where they both had their doctorate degrees. So they didn't know each other, but they forget to know each other on that basis. And they work together to make the transition aggressively complete at Shelton State. And I'd like to recommend more, more with Ashley as president of Shelton State Community College.
There's been a recommendation by the Chancellor that the board trustees appoint Dr. William Ashley as president of Shelton State Community College. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Smith. It's our second. Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? There being none, move to vote. All those in favor of approving Dr. William Ashley as president of Shelton State Community College, please raise your hand.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, Dr. Ashley, congratulations.
And Mr. President, first thing I want you to do is introduce.
Yes, good morning. Ann, would you stand? This is my wife, Ann Marie Ashley. Thank you for coming today, Ann. Appreciate you. Good morning, everyone, thank you. I'd like to say thanks to God first, I'd like to say thanks to the Chancellor, I'd like to say thanks to this board for this opportunity, and I look forward to leading Shelton State. And of course, I look forward to leading Shelton State and continuing and improving upon its mission of providing post-secondary education, workforce training, and also community education opportunities to broaden, deepen, and hopefully strongly improve our economic livelihood for our region, and hopefully that translates into our state. And I appreciate this opportunity to speak before you. Thank you very much.
I'm away on the Chancellor. Is there anything else on personnel?
Uh, I, I do have a couple of new employees that we, that we, young man standing in the back, which you probably can spot, he's one of the smaller guys with a black shirt on. Actually, he's been working with us for some months, I'm not sure exactly how long. His technology, he was working with us on a contract basis. I think we both, he and ourselves, developed an understanding of his importance in our program, so we've asked him to come on board permanently, and he has done so. Jamie Swindle is working, employed in technology, and it's Erica Rhodes here.
Yeah.
Okay, Erica is new, she's on the bill floor and working with the senior management, as we said, as secretary, and those people do anything else, they're as important, and that's always valuable.
Do you have a fourth floor?
I do have another, which I, I've been mentioning. Listen, would you mind going over here to the podium? Listen, I've been friends and friends a long time, and I don't know that I've ever heard her be as excited. One afternoon, I get a phone call, and she was just excited, I mean, she was almost where she couldn't talk. And I kind of wondered, what in the world is it? I mean, I've been through education classes with her, I've been under the pupil of the professor, I've never, nor have I been that excited in any manner. But she was so excited, I wanted you to talk about this a little bit, okay?
Okay. Thank you, thank you Chairman Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. Yes, I was excited, we're still excited. This has been a great year for our Wallace baseball team at, at Wallace Dopen, to win the state championship, and then to be able to participate and compete at the JuCo World Series. Those are events that we will all remember. Our team represented us very, very well and very professionally, and that certainly speaks to the leadership of our coach, Coach Mackie Sasser. And I want to tell you a little bit about him. Of course, we're very proud of all our team and wish they could have been here today, but many of them are not in school this summer or, or elsewhere, will be back with us this fall. But Mackie played baseball at Wallace Dopen the eighty-two and eighty-three seasons. And then he was drafted by the San Francisco Giants in the fifth round of the nineteen eighty-four major leagues in the baseball draft. And for nine seasons, he played with the Giants, with the Pittsburgh Pirates, Seattle Mariners, and the New York Mets. And then we were lucky enough to get him to come to Wallace and be the baseball coach, which he has been for the past twenty years. And this year, he celebrated his six-hundredth win at the college, and I just want to say how proud we are of him and the team and what he has done with the team, especially this year, and the enjoyment we have all had at Wallace in, in celebrating the win. And I also want to commend Dean Myrick for his support along the way, but I, I thought Mackie might like to make some comments to you.
How's it one day? Thank y'all for having us here today, it's a great honor. You know, it's, Dr. Young is really excited, she didn't, she failed to mention it was our fiftieth year this year of our baseball, any athletics at Wallace College, and we had a big thing for them, and, and it, you know, it just seemed like, you know, we had a lot of people out of our, our community that was on that team. And, you know, I was telling Linda that, you know, Dr. Young, that they sent out in the outfield when we had our, you know, before our game, we had them on the field taking photos for forty-five minutes, just sitting out in the outfield talking about old times, about baseball, and about Wallace College in general. And, you know, it's a great honor to go on and win, but it's the friendships and all the memories you have is what it's all about. And, you know, we believe, I've been there twenty years, and I believe in teaching leadership. Leadership to me are, is about players come back to me that are doctors, or warriors, or educators and everything we do to make them successful. And so that's what I've been teaching for twenty years. And so that's what I've been teaching for twenty years. So going to the national championship was a great honor, don't get me wrong. I've done a lot of things in my life with the Mets and everybody else, but the one thing that I always remember is the coming back, the players and, and everyone coming back to me and saying, thank you for what you've done for me. You know, I teach my kids what you taught me. And the thing about sports is team, you know, is team play. So it teaches us to be teams, just like we have here on this board, we're team players. And that's what we try to teach, and I've been successful that way. And, and not only on the winning teams, the losing teams are probably the best ones I can really teach, because, you know, failure is going to always bring a positive. So I'm glad to be able to do what I do. God put me on this earth for a reason, I've been doing it for fifty years, I'm fifty-four years old, playing since I was five, and, and, and teaching is something we all have to do. And I like to teach sports and baseball, and hopefully I continue for a few more years with my body holdup. Thank y'all for having us.
Thank you, Linda and Dean. They actually defeated certain teams in their national recognition. And that's a great story. I just think it's a good example of what those kinds of activities, Bill, I believe, that are code for it. You recognize opportunities for those activities and the kinds of leadership that can be taught through those activities. So we wish it to. Anything else?
Thank you for sharing that, it was Dr. Young, the coach. The important part, point that you made was not only the success and the achievement that the young man can be a part of, but you build leadership, you build character, and I think that's an important part of the experience in any of the sports programs for men and young women at our institutions. I have family that have played in those programs, and it was a big part of their development. And thank you for what all our institutions do across the state, the staff, teaching our young, young students, and also in the sports programs, and developing character. We're so pleased to have with us today the ACCS Instructional Administrators Association. I think we've got quite a few members, I'd ask them to please stand and be recognized.
Thank y'all so much for being here, we appreciate y'all being interested in what we do as a board, and appreciate what y'all do, and learning you association, so reported. These associations we have are a good opportunity. Thank y'all.
Any comments from the board? Once again, I know that Mr. Davis appreciates his selection as vice chair, and I thank him again for your confidence in me, as chairman, and don't ever hesitate to bring the mic to you over there.
I, I would like to say, for, you know, we've made the two appointments, but that's just the beginning. And it takes a considerable amount of time, as well as board members, to go through the process. We've done that, we've leased to our board. Board members, community leaders, and others have been involved in the process. We closed posting the three color jobs that we hope to fill next month, that closed yesterday. So we will start the process again, of going through the review process, the process of community involvement, board members anticipating once it gets down to the detailed interview process. So I just ask for your patience and putting up with us as we try to schedule those meetings as we move forward. So that we go, we do comply with a, a regular procedure by which we have qualified us out of the line.
Well, thank you, your statue, Chancellor, for the work that y'all put into that, and so been a thorough process. Gosh, thanks to the board members for giving their time for it. I, I just, so many of you have generous with their time for these interviews, for the process that will be in the future. Thank y'all for causing your occupations and other commitments in the life. Anything else from the board? Thank you, the comments for the board. Thank y'all for being here, once again, welcome, Mr. Newman. So good to have you. Our, we'll reconvene at one o'clock in the president's conference room for our work session there, and everyone may compete in this room all this time. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment of seven. All those in favor, say aye.